I appreciate it. We'll go ahead and call the March 18 meeting to order. And appreciate everybody being here and coming out and braving the sunshine to get here. And it's good to see. If you'll bow with me, we'll have a word of prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for yet another day of life, thankful for everything you do for us, thankful for the beautiful weather today. Pray that you'll be with us. Thank you for keeping us safe during the recent storms and as they're forecasting more storms, as only you can predict accurately. But we pray that if they come through here that you keep our people safe from harm. We pray a blessing on our people here. We know that as a community, we're blessed and as a people, we're blessed, and we thank you for that. And we ask that you go with us as we make decisions tonight and forgive us of our sins. Amen. All right, set of minutes from, it hasn't been too long since we met, three weeks, I think? February 25?
Make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hosed. Minutes approved unanimously. Anybody from the public want to address us? Hello, Ms. Brenda?
Hello.
Don't you love that? Just getting called out as soon as you walk in? All right, nobody wants to address us then? We'll move on. The police would be first in the, in the list tonight. I don't see anybody here. Chief Hinderlight is in Florida. He's got a couple of boys that are pretty good high school baseball players, and they're down there playing. And one of them is playing at a pretty major tournament down there. Played in Houston last week or week before. So he had told me he didn't know whether he could get back or not, and I said, you know, that's family. You take care of that first. But you got the, you got the report there. And I've got a couple of items that I'll bring up here under business in a few minutes. But that's our, I didn't see anything unusual about the report. But I'm sure that if you find something or you have questions, you'll be glad for you to email him and he'll, he's pretty good about getting back to you quickly. Um, Chief, you're next.
I don't have much for you tonight, but we had 44 calls last month, 17 of those in the city and 27 were in the county. There is one adjustment there in the apparatus status report. The rescue vehicle has been put back in service. It had a power steering pump issue, and the power steering pump was obsolete, so we'd had to try to hunt that down and ended up having to have it rebuilt by weller. So that got finished up and installed in last night, and everything on it is working well. So it's back in order. And we had two from our last recruit class, two firemen, that today completed their live-fire training to complete all of that, and they did a very fine job, and we're proud of them.
Still got a full roster?
Yes, sir.
Good. Just out of curiosity, just because it's on my mind from 30 minutes ago, I rode down the elevator with Danny Park that works for Lima, you know, small talk, asked him what he'd been doing. So they've been testing pumps all day. Said, I think he said 11 vehicles. How, which, which test starts yearly?
It should be yearly, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we do that by the same time they do or at different times?
We do. Sometimes we get in when they're doing it. Sometimes if Lebanon is, a lot of times it's easier when a company is coming to do it if you can kind of partner with another agency. That way they're all set up and ready to go, so.
We good on that?
Yes, sir.
Hosed and all that?
Yes, sir.
I haven't been able to come over the last two or three months, but fish fry?
It's going well. It's, with the warmer weather, it brings a good crowd, so.
Y'all probably get the same thing, but that's one of the most often asked questions I get in Lebanon. When's fish fry?
We get asked it a lot.
Yeah.
I had a question about our vehicle. Last month, last month, we had discussed you guys having a surplus vehicle.
Yes, ma'am.
And if Bob could use, where are we at on that?
Uh, I'm, I'm good with that. I'm just kind of waiting to make sure that everything's good and.
Okay. Now, Bob, we're, we're just, we didn't transfer the title. We hadn't done it yet, so we can do that. I promised Chief Honn with money. We were, he was counting on the surplus. We transferred over to his line item, so he's got it.
But you were good with that?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chief? Appreciate the good work y'all doing, guys.
Thank you.
Hope we don't have to use you.
Yes, sir.
Dale Smith would give us our other report. Dale is not here also. Dale was sick last week, but today is his daughter's birthday. And so he is doing what he ought to be doing with his daughter. So you see his report there. Most of the time, he doesn't have a lot for us, but this time he's got the cost of that Cornwall Avenue pump replacement that we talked about last time, a little over $7,000. So I think that's a little less than maybe what he had. I don't remember exactly what he said, but, but it's not in yet, so. And he doesn't have an ETA on when it'll be here. But he'll be glad to answer any questions, I'm sure, if you've got questions for him.
Did we have a dollar amount in last month's minutes related to that?
Uh...
I don't have the minutes.
I don't recall, Steve. Let's look right quick and see.
Somebody's in 8,500, Steve, in my head.
Uh, no, I know. I agree.
It's not in the minutes. I want to say he said $8,000.
I'm having the same memories. I'm just thinking it was $8,000, so.
Yeah, that's the reason I said it looked like it came in a little earlier. Anybody remember anything differently or the same?
No.
Okay. All right, go down to some items of old business, and I'll try to bring y'all up to date on a couple of things. The sewer project, let me find my notes here. Of course, Brian Conrad was with us three weeks ago, but we just see, received payment request number nine. When we pay that, we will have paid $2,543,669.70 on a total contract of $5,382,910. My Quickwater Town math, that's 47.25% of what we've done, which is about half. So nothing, nothing unusual there that I see. I did try to talk to Bob Adams today, who was working on our sewer and water rates study. And I got back from him that he's out of the office until tomorrow, so I don't have anything to report to you, but I did stress to him that we needed this information by April. We need to be able to do something in April with it or start the process. Water, I got this back from Steve Jones today, really kind of curious about where we are on the tank. And he says, "I am close to submitting the water tank project to TDEC for approval and anticipate building the tank and treatment plant in approximately 60 days." So that'll put us down the end of A. That'll be a summertime project as well, so we'll have a lot of people scurrying around in the community here, but that's a good sign, I think. Turntable, we had a meeting scheduled in February to begin the process, and the FRA people changed out the project administrator. They have since assigned a new project administrator, and we have our kickoff meeting by Zoom set Thursday at 11 o'clock. So kind of from talking to our architect or the guy that knows this stuff, he said not to expect too much from that meeting. It was more of an introductory type meeting, but they will then hold them monthly for status. And his best estimate, knowing that the person we're talking to that wouldn't know them if they walked in here, hadn't met them, but we're all speculating that this could be a project that finishes in the summer of 2026. Now, that doesn't exactly line up with the steam engine. I think they may be ready to run some tests, shorter test routes in October or so, but hopefully we'll get close enough. It's not a, not an issue. But that's the best information I've got on that. And then finally, on street paving, all I can tell you is when it rains hard, it lifts the patches out and the holes get deeper, but we'll fix them once we get the sewer buried and do what we can, do as much as we can. Any questions on any of that? I covered that pretty quickly, but.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Just because people ask all the time in the store. So they're going to talk about the National Guard doing the excavation part. Will that happen regardless of where things are at with the grant portion of it? Like, are they coming to do that?
That's, that's a really good question, and I need to give them a decision after this meeting Thursday. But what we were told today by the people that advise us and that do all the work for the railroad up and down the line in several short lines is if we start the project without getting the federal money, they'll assume that we have other sources of income and they'll pull their money back. So we probably will not take that chance, but I am going to talk to them, assuming I hear what I, or what we think we're going to hear Thursday that the project's to go, but we'll take a little time. I'm going to see about if they can schedule us next spring or summer to do it. But I don't want to lose them. They've been very nice and somewhat anxious to help us. And so, but I don't want to leave them out there hanging and call them the week before and say, hey, we don't need you. So I need to give them an answer first till the week, probably.
And also, from a construction project perspective, you got to have excavation occur. You can't have a long period of time after excavation before you start because the weather can cause you to have to redo all that.
And it presents problems for us. We've got a big hole over there holding water. The last thing we need is somebody in there thrashing around, somebody drowning or whatever.
It's not a public swimming pool.
Not a public swimming pool. Not even that pond, I want to do. We don't have time to grow any fish. But the thinking that it was explained to me was that would be treated as an in-kind contribution for the city of Watertown, but if we have an in-kind contribution before they actually, the project's been approved, but before they stamp it and say, here's what you need to do next, we would kill our 1.6. Not willing to do that, of course. Good question. Others? I forgot to ask while I go. I do it every time. Is anybody out there wanting to comment during public business?
There are no comments. We do have seven viewers and 11 total views so far.
Good. I'm glad people are using that. Okay. Got your budget report. Still, there is some situation with expenses more than income, but been thinking about it and talked to April, and we're going to talk some more. We paid all our ARPA money, not all our ARPA money, but all we were going to pay on bonuses. And then we paid some of the police departments for some improvements they're making. And that money's still on the certificate deposit. So when that deposit certificate matures, and I think it's May, I'll take that money out and put it in the general fund. That should put that back in line, but I don't, I hope I'm right. April and I will double check on that. So I hope that'll bring that back in the line. So having said that, I don't see anything that really alarms me water and sewers in the black. And parks is about $3,000 below, but we're just now beginning to get all our baseball and softball and tee ball money in, so that'll work itself out. That's the biggest sports program, maybe I shouldn't say that. It's one of the two biggest as far as finances, what comes in. Football's a pretty good size problem, too. Anybody got any questions on that? Okay. Steve and I met two or three weeks ago on talking about development regulations and building permit fees. We're not any further along, but we expect to have you something here shortly, and we may have to look at going in another direction. Do you?
I have a guy. He's waiting for us to.
We may want to look at that. Steve and I both got some information from the county, and there wasn't what I had in mind.
Yeah.
Now, that may be still negotiable, but right now it doesn't look good. Steve, I, I issued my thought this morning, and Steve texted me five minutes later that I feel the same way, so. Anyway, that's where we are on that. Did, you did look at, get a chance to see the audit last month and gave you a copy of it. We need to vote to approve that audit. It's kind of a formality, but they expect us to do that at the comptroller's office, so I'd like for you to vote to approve that, if you would.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as presented last month. I mean, the audit.
We'll get that other question.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion on that? We discussed last month. I think the findings are there all the time. It's just we're a small municipality and we can't hire 10 or 12 people to do our accounting and bookwork, so. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Steve, anything on the park expansion you want to talk about?
Uh, no. I mean, it's a short turnaround between last month and this month, but.
Yeah.
I would expect, hopefully Jeff Tunks and I can have something to maybe go, start going possibly toward a state grant here in another two to three months.
I put that on the agenda just in case you had something. I didn't have anything. But I will tell you, Steve Smart was in a pre-construction turntable meeting with us today, and he told me that he is willing to start on another grant for us. I think you and he have had some conversations.
Yeah, he and I have had conversations in the past, but.
He does good work. He does good work. So we've been fortunate to have him. And we talked last month, I'm still under old business, about the situation with parking on the square. Has anything developed on that? Has there been any talk of having a meeting? Or you mentioned last time about the business, the Chamber and the city getting together, brainstorming, brainstorming a little bit.
I wasn't at the last meeting, Chamber meeting, because I was out of town, but they mentioned it, that it would probably kind of thing. I'm going to be at the next meeting, try to bring it up there, the business side, and I think they, everybody, and I've talked to several business folks. Everybody seemed in agreement that, yes, hey, something we should think about. So I guess it's a question of who wants to initiate, that kind of thing. Should come from the business owner, Chamber side, or something. The city wants to initiate. I mean, I have a couple of personal thoughts for whoever that wants to kind of initiate a conversation. I think it's a, it's a simple thing to start addressing. I don't think you have to overthink it. But I think everybody seems to be willing to, hey, we need to look at something.
Well, my, my thought would be whoever initiates it, but finding the date might be the toughest thing to get as many people involved. I don't see the need, unless y'all feel differently, for us to have a formal meeting. I think we can sit down and everybody talk, and then if something comes out of there, we can present it at our next regular meeting as an agenda item.
And if you'd like, I can talk on that side and just kind of get a couple of suggestions and then present from our side to y'all here. So, I mean, here are two or three suggestions. But the business side will be interested in, you know, because it is the street side, the public, street side, so it'd be.
I didn't want to slip through the cracks.
Yeah, no, no, no. I appreciate it. I'll do that, if that's okay.
If we had a letter from the Chamber to all the businesses, why can't we just go that route? It just says, hey, the business owners and employees, please park in these areas. Just something as simple as that would eliminate probably 10 spots.
I mean, honestly, I think the two central themes are a minimum number of short-term parking spots and a letter from the city council, the Chamber, to the business owners saying, you know, hey, please, trying to take up the center of the city, park on the outskirts. I think that's a place to start until we get pretty done with it. Anything outside of that is kind of complicated.
Why can't we just have a committee research this and do it, maybe from four or five different types? The city and the Chamber and the business and whatever.
Maybe you may want to approach the Chamber and say, how do they feel about that? They want a couple of city council members with.
And that may be good for other things that we want to address, to have the city and the Chamber in, in agreement on things. That may be a really good thing to form a committee for that, to create that bond between the two.
I just wanted to put it out, and I think this would be a good opportunity for the Chamber to communicate with the business folks.
See what they think about that, and then we can put a committee together here.
Sure.
Anybody else can come to the meeting if wants to, with texts.
I'll do that, and then the next meeting I'll bring back.
Okay.
Kind of where we stand on that.
Sounds good. Next meeting is tax day, April 15.
While we're on the parking on the square, I know you got that text that day, too, that there was a vendor set up on a day that we did not approve
Right.
to close the square down or to close any parking down. How can we address that? I mean, is that just simple of one of our police officers go over there and say, hey, this is not a permitted day to be set up here. We need you to go set up.
That needs, that needs to be addressed before they actually get set up. To be honest with you, I'm disappointed that no one from the Chamber is here today because we will have the yard sale before our next meeting.
Yep.
So that tells me that nothing on the square can be shut down for the yard sale because nothing's been approved and nothing's been requested.
Well, and, you know, we got a train coming in this Saturday. I wonder if the same thing's happening. And, and, you know, it's tough to strike a balance, but we have to between our existing merchants who are there and make their living on the square versus people that come in and set up for a day or two a month or whatever. Kind of like we did with the food trucks, where we set up a thing where, you know, they can come in. They're competing with people that pay property taxes and sales taxes. And to come in and set up and make money, I have no problem with that. It's American way. But they are really at a competitive, our people who, who are here all the time are at a competitive business balance. And so I don't, as this was happening that Saturday, my thought as I was driving up the road was maybe we just need to quit closing down the square. But then I got to thinking, is that throwing the baby out with the bathwater? I don't know.
Well, right now, the only time we close it are the two yard sales, and it was the music festival. We don't close it any other time.
I think we had a standing vote. It may have been before Steve was on the council. Year, several years ago, where we were closed for the yard sale, fall and spring, and then we had the jazz festival.
Right, and that was it.
But we don't have the jazz festival. We never talked about closing down a portion of the square unless they came and asked for it specifically and we approved it.
Right.
I don't remember approving last week. Okay.
Why should they, the ones that set up on the square for the yard sale setup down here in the pavilion? I know they rent that out, too, but if they could, that way the traffic could keep moving and people walking. I know it's convenient for them to set up around the square, but if they could set up there, because that street is full of yard sale stuff. It just don't have a lot of people up and down there.
My, my, and I'm fine with that. My concern is just people that make their living on the square.
They get, they get, yeah.
The issue two weeks ago was the fact that not the, the outside parking spots between the gazebo and the bank were closed. They put barrels up and shut them down, and nobody knew that was going to happen. And there was actually one lady trying to get her car out of the parking spot. She would, she had to back up three or four times to miss the barrel because I watched her do it, because that's, I was on the phone trying to contact different people. I happened to be unfortunate, the one that walked into the barber shop when all this happened. So I, they, I was asked to look into it. And so, and, you know, like I said, I'm disappointed the Chamber isn't here tonight because we do have events coming up and we've been.
We do. It more to be cooperative with the Chamber, but we've got to be cooperative with everybody.
Well, it's, it more down to, it was a communication issue. It was definitely a communication issue, and that's what needs to be worked on. And that's the, that's the agreement that Ms. Thomas and I came to that Saturday over there on the sidewalk, that we need to make sure we communicate better going forward.
Well, we need to make sure.
She's not the president.
No, she is the events coordinator, though.
Nobody has requested approval to do the same thing this Saturday, so we'll need the police chief to go over and say, we don't have approval to do it this Saturday. And if they want in the future, we're pretty reasonable, basically. Okay.
By the way, Tim and I picked those barrels up this morning, put them behind the out of house. They were still out there.
Y'all get them, Kelly?
We didn't set them up. I didn't know where we got them.
We just saw them pick them up. Now, please don't go there too long.
Yes.
I have a comment and a question. I'll say the comments first. Brandon Thomas is watching on behalf of the Chamber of Events. And the question is, Conrad Construction has put a sewer cleanout in my yard. When the sewer line is installed and then used, will I be connected to the sewer line? Will that cost be on the homeowner?
No, no, we'll check on that and get her an answer. Did you hear that question April something? I remember after it's written down somewhere. Okay. That was the question? You said there was a comment. Was that the same person?
The comment was from Brandon Thomas.
Okay, all right. We'll find that out and get her an answer.
All right.
All right, let me go to a few items of new business. The police chief has asked that we declare a surplus, the old Dodge Charger. And folks, it's time. That thing has been a drain on the maintenance and repair. We put enough into that car to make it a car that should lead a parade. Anyway, he wants to surplus it, thinks it'll go from between $3,000 to $5,500. So I would recommend that we surplus it, vote to surplus it, and then give him some direction as to what price to set on it.
I'll make a motion, Kelly. Go forward with that.
Make it surplus. Got an idea about what kind of price you want to set it at?
I'd say $35,000, probably pretty good.
It probably.
$4,000?
Yeah.
Take, go at the middle of his range here, the $4,000.
That's in the middle. All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion to declare that car a surplus, sell it on Gov. deals for not to, no less than $4,000.
Yeah, reserve $4,000.
Okay.
As much as that's cost us, we might as well just give it away.
You what?
I said, much as that's cost. I said, much as that's cost us, we might just give it away.
Well, what triggered this is he sent me a purchase order the other day about all that needed and that's, let's talk about this, and he said, why would you surplus? Sounds good to me.
Keep smart bees out there.
Yep, alright. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Coach? Alright, and.
He's already got it, emptied it out or not?
I don't know. I don't know, he'll be back, I think tomorrow or Thursday. And this doesn't require any action, but I did want to bring you up to date on some of our police officers. Don Willis has retired as of March thirty-one, so he's still got a few days left. Wes Lepner has resigned to take a full-time job in Portland, which is ten minutes from his home and they provide family insurance. So it sounds like a good move for Wes. Connor Warren has taken a full-time job with Carthage PD. All of them gave a two-week notice and Connor is actually going to work four more days while we get one of our replacement officers aboard. Chief has hired Ernest Payton, who is a retired federal investigator who is going to fill the role that Don Willis has been doing and will be working part-time, at least at start. And we'll have a new full-time officer named Brandon Deffendal. And I've not met Mr. Deffendal, but, so by my, again, Watertown subtraction there, that leaves us one short. But he's got those, of course, there's a probation period for them, so they'll be brought back to you at a later date if they're made permanent, so. I'm sure they all have that. Laura, you wanted to talk on the update on the billboard and the lights on the industrial park sign.
Yes, on the billboard, that was a grant like you had talked about and we can always apply for the grant again, apply for a grant to help fund the billboard. So that's all I have on that right there.
Okay.
And the industrial park sign, I talked to Mr. Lyons and he has gone all the way back, he can't find anywhere that said that they were going to put lights on it. He said if we wanted to, we could contact the economic agencies.
For like?
You're on the board, yes.
For like, I'm not, Mayor Hutto is.
No, there's something that you're on the board of.
Joint Economic Development.
The Joint Economic Development. And if we wanted to contact them, they could tell us the steps to go about getting the lights. I was just approached to want to know about the lights, not that they were requesting it. So there's nowhere in the records that says there is, was supposed to be lights there.
Did you talk to Charlie Lyons?
Yes, sir.
Did he give you any idea if there's any money out there?
He did not.
For us, because if there was, I might have another project to use it.
But he did say that he suggested talking to the economics.
I don't know if that would fall under to the Joint Economic Development Board or not?
I'm not sure either, but what I'll do is I'll ask Mayor Hutto if he can, because he's the one who came to us with it and he said, look, we got ten thousand dollars, they spread their money out and we got ten thousand dollars, we can spend up your place if you want it. I said, certainly we want it. So I'll see if there's anything out there.
He said that there was money there that we just, agencies, municipals need to request it and put why and what it's for and the steps of getting it. And then they go back and approve or not approve. He didn't definitely say there's money for Watertown, he just said there's money in general.
I'll ask Mayor Hutto, he's on that board. We kind of got any in there.
But I would like for us to do something with the billboard at some point. I would like, I don't know how to go about getting that.
That's the chamber, they make the application to the county's Health and Welfare Committee and they usually get funded. I don't know what they do with their, it's a reimbursement grant. When they get awarded that, then they spend the money and send it in and get reimbursed.
And part of me would kind of like to wait until we closer to when the steam engine's becoming closer to that time to incorporate that, because I think that's going to be a big draw to Watertown. Maybe have the steam engine and then sprinkle with some of our other wonderful things, because I really think the steam engine's going to turn our town around more than people realize.
I do too.
There was another comment by Brandon Thomas.
Uh huh.
For the last, there's another comment from Brandon Thomas. For the last three years, a few parking spaces inside the gazebo have been blocked for food trucks and any vendors that pay to set up for trains. Would you be a safe place for them?
For the last three years?
We denied that the last time. Caleb actually brought it to our, Caleb brought it to our attention and said we weren't going to shut down anywhere for the train days, except for those three events. Remember you said that was, you were the one that brought it and said that there was a problem?
Yeah.
And so we voted collectively that said we were only going to shut it down for those three main events. And anything else had to be brought to our attention and we could like put it on a road, one road or something like that, the food trucks. I know, remember us discussing that, we talked about over by the, what did you just say? Pavilion and, you know, around that area.
They're catching the trains, they can let's place to catch them.
Right.
It's right there.
But I do not recall us voting to say we were going to shut down every train or shut down the middle of the square, every train, because that would hurt our businesses.
I know, and then the jazz festival, they set the food trucks up down there in that grassy area. That seemed to work out real good. I don't know who owns that, across from the old beach door.
And I remember Caleb, because he never says anything, so when he spoke up, I knew it was important that night.
I'm pretty sure she can't stand and voted against that, to not close it down. I'm pretty sure what that was.
Yeah, because she was wanting to do two back-to-back. Yeah, we said no. We said no to that.
So are we in agreement that?
No.
Not this Saturday?
Okay.
I just got something else.
Yes, sir.
One more comment from Brandon Thomas, she says, it was done before I took over. I wasn't aware of any issues.
None of us remember.
Well.
I've been here for five years and I know, I don't think we've approved that.
We'll go back and check the minutes. We'll check, not before this Saturday, but we'll check the minutes and see what we find out.
Okay.
But the pavilion is free, correct?
We can make it that way. Yard sale, we sometimes rent it out.
But for train day, that would be perfect. And that road would be perfect for food vendors.
The only thing about that road, the last yard, I think it was the last yard sale, no, it had to be the spring yard sale because we were out of town with fall yard sale. The spring yard sale, you had a food truck there in front of the pavilion that blocked half the street. And Chief Henderlich was very upset about that. They literally were out in the road and the road was open to traffic. And you had to drive around the food truck to get down, what is that? That's, is that Central Avenue there? Anyway.
No, just down.
South Central.
It's South Central, yeah. So it's okay for food trucks, if they want to plan to put food trucks at the pavilion, that's fine, but we've got to make sure they're not blocking the roadway.
We're catching a little grief over here, I hope I tell this right, April. But we've charged the food trucks, making them pay a monthly or, you know. But then apparently the chamber's making them pay something and they get mad at us. And that's, am I right on that, April? We told them, you know, let's put you in the chamber.
And that is specifically why that food truck ordinance had an exemption in there for two events a year. And we would exempt the requirement for the city permit for a food truck two times a year. It doesn't necessarily have to be both yard sales, it can be two times a year. But again, as part of that, the event, the special event coordinator is supposed to be providing us with a list of which food trucks are coming a week in advance of the event so we can determine, keep track of who's had their two free shots. Again, we're back down to the communication issues that we need to address.
So the chamber needs to come to a meeting so we can talk through this.
Yes, sir.
Brandon Thomas says, we have nothing on the square this Saturday. I will not let anyone come in moving forward.
Okay, well, and we'll, I'm sure she's, we'll get to the bottom of them.
Yeah.
We just don't need to have another day like we had Saturday a week ago.
Yeah, the tenth or something like that.
So we'll get to them, we don't want to be firing everybody.
Yeah, and again, I don't think anybody, any of us are opposed to having food trucks come in when they have train days or event days. We just need to coordinate, communicate better in advance so we don't have the issue like we had back on March tenth.
And very true, and another factor that hadn't been mentioned here, I don't think, is that the people that come in on the train want more options. And so, again, we come back to what Brenda said about putting them down here or whatever, where there are more options, that don't want to hurt our restaurants and shops around the square, but if they get hit with five hundred people at one time, they can't handle them anyway. So we need to be able to, there should be a balance there.
While we're talking about the square, we brought it up a while ago that we won't have another meeting before the mile-long yard sale. So I've been thinking about, that kind of worries me that we're not closing the square down for the mile-long yard sale.
Well, I thought, you said a while ago, though, we've done it.
We have approved it, but then it was mentioned just a minute ago that we weren't closing it, but we have already approved for that to be closed down.
We have.
Yes, and for the safety, we need that closed down. We've got a lot of people coming on train days.
And I think what we were just discussing a few minutes ago was not closing it down for a train day.
Correct, correct.
But we had voted to close it down for both yard sales.
I just want to make that clear.
And we left it out to discretion of the police chief for whoever was in charge that day as to whether they make the street one way from west to east and for how long.
Yes.
You know, sometimes they make it one way at seven o'clock, probably back up at one or something.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Glad you brought that up. Steve, you and Laura, I'm going to ask if you would as the vice mayor and the two previous vice mayors serve on the budget committee. And nothing to start on now, really, it's going to be hard to do anything until we know what the recommendation's going to be on water and sewer. But once that happens, I'll give y'all some information, tell you where to look for stuff. And I'll be working on it too, I'm not going to, the law, the charter says I've got to present a budget to you, but I'd love to have the help. Keep in mind, and I know you know this, but let me say this publicly because we have employees here. We have a finite amount of money and not any more. And to find money to give employee raises, which they should have, what you have to do is find a way to cut somewhere. You know, if we're doing something that we don't need or we don't need to put this much money into it, we only need to put half this much. That's the way to find raises. And priority for me is always to take care of our employees. Now, we took care of them pretty well this year, both with hourly increases and bonuses. I would put them on notice, that's not going to happen this time. They won't be that big, of course, there won't be the art bonuses. And, but there should be some raises there and we'll find a way to do that. But unless somebody in town wins the lottery and wants a tax write-off and will give us some money, we'll have to find it in our money. But, so if y'all buy lottery tickets and you want some money, you need a tax write-off, just send it on in. We'll write you a letter saying, why is it? But if y'all would do that, I appreciate it. So just a couple of informational items on the agenda. Next meeting I mentioned will be tax day, April fifteenth, so we'll all be in a really good mood that day. And opening day for our community league here is scheduled for April five, weather permitting. And that's always a crapshoot at this time of year. Sometimes it's fifty degrees, sometimes it's forty degrees, sometimes it's wet, one time it's even foggy early one morning because it's springtime. Hopefully we can get started off. Jeff and April, help me, I'm having a senior moment. What's the gentleman that's running the league, his name?
Mr. Smith.
Jonathan Smith. They're working very hard on this and I've already ordered the shirts and all of that stuff, so. Sponsors are out there, people have supported this program for years and we appreciate that. And Jeff and Jonathan in charge, I think we'll have a good year. And that's all I have, so I will, I'll go around the table. We got anybody else over there, want to speak?
No, sir, there are no more comments.
Good.
Fourteen current viewers and a total of twenty-seven views and so on.
Good, that might be a record. That might be a record. Okay, Ms. April, you're first up tonight.
I have nothing.
Alright, Mr. Caleb?
I'm good.
Mr. Kyle?
We making, are we making, have we, Town Hall, Old Town Hall?
Gerald Anderson has done some work on it and I'm paying a bill on it this Friday.
Yeah, actually, he, last week I got, I saw him at church on Sunday afternoon, he sent me some pictures. It dried out enough, they were actually doing the brick work that had to be done initially on that back wall to get the wall sturdy and steady before they could take the roof off, because they were afraid the wall was going to fall in if they tore the roof off without fixing the wall first.
And he showed me pictures of where that's done. They just finished it that day at the ballpark you were up there with the softball game. They just finished it that day and it looked really good.
And he brought us a bill yesterday morning and asked for a draw on our contract price of ten thousand dollars and we're going to head and write a check for that, I'll sign it tomorrow or Thursday.
So all that's happened since, in the last nine days, because it was Sunday a week ago they got started.
So the, all the mess that's still in there?
Still in there. We'll get there.
Alright. You did, I heard you did, yeah. Can you think of anything else, Bill? Ms. Laura?
Oh, we have a park bench sitting under the basketball goal out here and some people moved it and they got in trouble and was told to move it back. Somebody's going to get hurt on that, where it's sitting. So will a city employee please move it so they do not get in trouble for moving it? Thank you.
What are they doing, using it to jump off of or?
No, no, somebody put it there, we don't know who put it there. But some of the basketball boys moved it to the side so that they wouldn't run into it. And they got told to move it back, they don't have a right to move property. And.
Who told them that?
Who told them that, yeah.
One of our employees, of our police employees. So I'm asking if a city employee will please move it? It needs to go on one of the sides. I like it there, but not under a goal, because somebody's going to get hurt.
I have moved that thing in countless times, I'm known around it and every time I move it, I wish we'd run back home.
It doesn't, then.
So I'll move it where it's.
We may need to push it down. Thank you so much.
I just figured somebody, you, that'd show off how like you do.
And some other person might be, but that's not where it needs to be.
Alright, you take care of that again for us tomorrow?
I thank you.
I bet that's done by Tuesday Saturday.
It might be done by tonight.
It could be. It could be, what else you got?
That's it, I'm good, thank you.
Alright, Steve?
I already mentioned the new, the old city hall. And this is again for the maintenance department. We opened up, we took out a section of the fence for the sewer line down there months ago. And then a couple of months after that, we had a car accident that took out the fence from that opening all the way up to the bridge down here on Main Street, Creek. I noticed the last couple of days, there used to be some cones sitting there, there's nothing there to mark or bring anybody's attention to the fact that if you step off that sidewalk... to the fact that if you step off that sidewalk, it's gonna be quite a tumble. So, it's kind of a safety issue, and my other question was, are we, has the city filed a claim against the lady who ran off the road and took the fence out with her vehicle, or have we had an insurance claim on that?
Let me take them one at a time. Can you take care of putting some cones out in the morning or locking that off or something?
Yes, sir, and that situation in court systems right now, that was my wife that ran off of that.
Okay.
And I'm trying to get a quote from Mr. Hinderlight, because he took the, uh, police report to get her to pay for that. So that's one of the courts I have not been coming through.
Yeah, I was, from a safety perspective, we just need to get some cones, some yellow tape or something.
And one thing I have a problem with is like, the, the children in the evening time, they're the ones I'm thinking are, am I blaming anybody? But they're throwing them down there in the bottom of the pit, but I suppose the cops they would get, get blocked off.
Thank you.
So you think the other thing might work out through what you're talking about?
I hope so, 'cause it, it should be there a couple of months.
Alright, I'd, I'd like to keep filing a claim if we can, but if we need to, we will, but then if they come after, the cost might go up, so.
Yeah, 'cause I think Mr. Bob, when he talked about, we would have to have somebody come in and actually fix that, because those posts are actually pre-drilled in that concrete and they're welded to a hole before it's planted. All it has to do is hook back up, hook back up to the bridge.
Is there anything we can do to make it more secure for, for the mile-long yard sale? 'Cause we're gonna use those cones other places.
Well, I'll talk to Mr. Bob about it in the morning and see if we can put, uh, the temporary fence up right there where we might go through there, 'cause right now I have no way of securing the post without using the concrete.
Why can't you set one of those big concrete barrier lines there?
It would block the sidewalk.
They're, and they're not ours, they're, that's the sewer people.
They love walking the concrete.
I guess Ryan would do it, but...
I can ask him if he can let us go off, you know, a couple.
I mean, you could put a barrier, change the barrier.
He's got to tell you this, where we have some interest in going into the field for the work. He's actually got those out right now, so. I give Mr. Bob a second.
Thank you.
Alright, sounds good. You got enough to do between eight and nine o'clock in the morning now.
I, I'm busy.
I've been busy all my life, son, it don't always work. But it's a nice thought, but it turns on you after a while. What else you got, Steve?
That's it.
Al?
Uh, about this, uh, dump over here where we burn our trash, how's that coming along?
Uh, I'm not aware of any problems.
I mean, have we got problems in, other people?
Hey, not that I'm aware of, hell, no, I haven't gone over and looked. Uh, the guys go over there pretty frequently, we're not, not finding any trash or anything.
No, sir, me and Bob have decided, we have left the gate open for now.
Okay.
And if somebody goes like here and just rots the, the spot, there's no, there's no trash, and then my bearings are broken, wood.
Okay. I think Hinderlight's got somewhat of a view on it, over there, from the system that's, that's HD, so I think he's able to see.
We got enough cars there.
Yeah.
You got those signs too on that fence?
Yes, my friend. Yeah, I've got the signs in front of it, but we have left it fully open to the public, 'cause of all the stolen stuff.
You show them in here, I'll, I'll, you can do the work.
I like that.
Well?
Yes, I have to say, I'm sorry, no.
Uh... Anybody else out there in TV land, or whatever we call it now, YouTube land?
No comments, but fifteen current viewers and twenty-nine views in total.
That's good. That's good. Alright, anybody? Anything, anybody? Alright, let's go home.
Alright, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Take that.
Alright.